I call the honor of a regular meeting in the Goodyear City Council, 11 December 2006. May I please lead everyone in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord God, please care for and protect our young men and women serving in Afghanistan and Iraq, and pay particular care to the soul of Chauncey Coore, who passed away this past week. Chauncey was in his mid-eighties. He was on the Council of Goodyear in 1964, and many years thereafter, serving as mayor from '83 to '89. He was superintendent of the schools, he was a principal, he was a landmark in the city of Goodyear in the southwest valley. So we ask that you care for Chauncey, Cleo, his wife, and the entire family, as they endure a change in their lives. We also take this opportunity to thank you for all those who came before us on this council over the years that Chauncey served, for they laid the foundation and the groundwork for the efforts underway today, and the hopeful successes that result from those efforts. All council members are in attendance. We have no minutes, and we have no expenditures to approve or ratify. We'll now move to communication, and I'm going to move down to the audience and ask the Vice Mayor if you would handle communications for us.
I'd like to announce that Dean Kokenar has two items to present. Do you want me to read what those are? Presentation of a plaque by Ed Bantel, representing AMR RP for its outstanding achievement and continued excellence in risk management and control of losses. And two, presentation of divided check in recognition of low workers' compensation losses during the 2004-2005 plan year. Dean?
Mr. Mayor, distinguished council members, Mr. Bantel was unable to be with us this evening, and so standing in for Mr. Bantel, a board member of Arizona Municipal Risk Retention Pool, Councilmember Sousa.
provider, Sandy Bensick. She is here this evening to present us with a check, a dividend return, having had successful eliminating those losses as they relate to workers' compensation. Sandy?
Okay. Do you want to step around? Give her the mic so that everyone can hear.
Thank you, Dean. On behalf of SCF Arizona, I'd like to congratulate the city of Goodyear and present you with this dividend for you and the council, and also all the efforts towards safety for the employees.
Thank you very much. Can you read that?
It's $32,502.22.
Thank you very much, and congratulations to all of our employees and friends in the city. And I have a third presentation by the mayor.
I was honored the other night to be able to present to Marilyn Smith our proclamation from the city of Goodyear. And tonight, the mayor would like to present a Pebble Creek resident with the -- who was, by the way, inducted into the Hall of Fame, presenter with the key to the city. Mayor?
And yes, Frank presented this award, an award in Pebble Creek, but this goes way beyond Pebble Creek. We are pleased and proud in the city of Goodyear, 50,000 strong, to have a woman of the caliber of Marilyn Smith. She's a great human being. She's absolutely renowned within the golf industry, and has been, and I hope she's not sad to hear this, for half a century. So she was a co-founder of the LPGA. She was the winner of two major tournaments, which is a very unusual occurrence, as you all know. In total, in her career, she won 21 different tournaments. Her nickname on the tour was Miss Personality. And in a second or two, you're going to find out why, because she also was the president of the LPGA. So she's certainly done her speaking in her days, and I've heard her, and she's just superb. But as the mayor, I'm honored to present a key to the city of Goodyear, to Marilyn Smith, but just plain honored to have you among us now and many years in the future. So thank you for joining Goodyear.
It's okay to give $5 to say that much. Can I say a couple of words?
As many as you want. We're looking forward to it.
You've got a lot of business to do.
No, I'm --
You're important to us.
Well, thank you. I'm real proud and privileged to receive this award, and I'm just, I've been richly blessed in my life. I've been in all 50 states and 36 countries, and met five presidents, and now I live in Pebble Creek in Goodyear, which is fabulous. And so I'm honored, and if someone is mean to me, do I lock them out of the city? But I would like to commend all the council members and you, Mayor, for giving up your time and talent to make the area grow and make it a wonderful place to live. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and we're glad that you decided to live here with us.
Oh, I'm honored. My sister, Gaye Pathus, she talked me into moving here, from Dallas.
Well, thank you, Gaye.
I'm going to come back to a meeting. When do you meet? I like the idea of attending your meetings.
Every other Monday, second and fourth Mondays.
Good.
In a council meeting.
I'll be back.
You're doing more than welcome.
Thank you very much.
That was great. Thank you very much for all three presentations. Thank you, Frank, for your help. We'll now move to opportunity for citizens -- no, no. Time for Councilmember Recor. Councilmember Holland?
I just wanted to show the city employees the plaque that -- I'm sorry, Gil Gregory, the astronaut, is not here to receive this. He was very kind in coming and talking to us on Employee Appreciation Day. And I'm going to tell him that how much we appreciated it by this plaque. I think Susan was here a minute ago, and I think she has a letter to present also. So just wanted to kind of show you guys that. He was really well-received. The second thing is, there is no way I would have missed the Guns and Hoses football game on Saturday. Councilwoman Antoniak and myself were representing the city, and I'm telling you, that was a game you guys just ought to plan on that for next year. The Guns won, but again, it was the sports commentators, I think, that kind of stole the show. They were just perfect for their job. I don't know if those guys are in here, but they really kept things moving quite well, and very, very humorous. So again, it was a lot of fun.
Thank you. Councilmember Scott?
I'm just going to give the council an update. Last August, I was asked to look into whatever mechanism is in place in this area by the county or by the state for monitoring tattoo polers with regard to infectious disease. And as I suspected, before I started looking into this, there is no mechanism in place. Since then, I've talked to the physician in charge, Dr. Englund, who is the medical director for Maricopa County. He tried working with the county attorney's office to see if we could get an intergovernmental agreement on how we could monitor tattoo polers in our city anyway. That was a failure. We are now, and I might say that Elizabeth Simpson's been very helpful in assisting me in this project. Today, we had a phone conference with Don Harrington, who is the bureau chief for the Department of Epidemiology for the state, and we may be able to find a promising answer with support from the state. If that fails, then we will go to our state representatives, because in this day and age, with the rising number of cases of hepatitis C almost on a daily basis, not to be monitoring these facilities, I think is wrong. So we'll continue to explore all avenues until we come up with a solution for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick items. My wife and I attended the National League of Cities Conference in Reno last week, and previous mayor of San Antonio and previous HUD Secretary Cisneros was keynote speaker. He was exceptionally good. He was talking about all forms of housing.
He's a housing guy.
Yeah, so that was worthwhile. Met with the Transportation Council, and also we're joining the University Communities Council. So Goodyear will be a part of that council, and for obvious reasons. Then today, several of us met with the Arizona Republic Editorial Board, talked to them about our plan for bringing baseball to Goodyear. We had a lot of questions, and I think we had the answers. I want to thank the Arizona Republic, Lynn, for inviting us to do that, and very professional event today, so we're thankful for that opportunity. It looks like, unrelated to the editorial board, that we will be presenting to the STA our final presentation on 21 December. So that's hopefully the date, and we're ready to go. Okay. Managers report on Colonel -- Council items.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, two items. January 13th is a skate park dedication, which everybody is anxiously awaiting for, and we have a -- we're testing lights and doing other things out there right now. The other thing is that next Monday, you will be receiving the recommendation regarding the library intergovernmental agreement with the county, and staff and the mayor are meeting later this week with county representatives on that issue.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move to an opportunity for citizens to make comments on any subject not on this evening's agenda. Any subject not on this evening's agenda. We, I understand there are folks here from down in the Mobile area, or Rainbow Valley area, that had expected us to be talking about the Sonoran Valley general plan amendments today. It wasn't originally scheduled for today. It was moved to the 18th. But since they are here, we want to give you an opportunity to speak right now, if you'd like, and you can come back next week and do the same. But since you travel quite a ways to visit us, we certainly would like you to express your views on that subject at this point, if you'd like to. So before I ask for that, is there anyone else who would like to comment on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, would anyone from the Sonoran Valley, or what we're calling the Sonoran Valley, like to speak?
Mr. Mayor, the speaker card filled out for Terry Hudson.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Nice to meet you all again, and to everyone that's here this evening. Now, sorry about the protocol, I made the wrong meeting, but just a couple of comments I want to make due to annexation of Goodyear to Mobile. And I thank you all. There's a lot of mixed feelings concerning the issue of annexation of Mobile by Goodyear. There are also emotions involved, especially with persons like myself. Mobile has had to fight by itself for many most part in order to maintain its existence. People, companies, corporations have tried to take over and leave Mobile in the wake of their dust, but we are still here. There are two ways companies that are in Mobile that have been a great assistance to us in Mobile in many ways. Mobile knows change. Much change has been a part of our existence. We have seen a great deal of change. We learn to accept change. I'm going to play sorry about that. To embrace it, if it is for our good. In the midst of our change, we have still had to fight to maintain the history, the heritage that has been left for us by our parents and others who have pioneered in our reverend community and town. We will always fight to maintain our identity. Now, the proposal is for Mobile to be annexed by Goodyear. How will this annexation affect our name/identity? We will be lost in the dust of time, buried to never be heard of again. It is not only the name that I'm concerned about, but the recognition of our heritage, history, and honor associated with the town of Mobile. Excuse me, this is nudity. It's kind of awkward.
You're doing great.
Thank you very kindly. We do not want to lose any of this at all. Look at it this way. Not everybody wants to be president, but everybody wants to be recognized as somebody. Same for those of us who have longstanding ties to Mobile. I'm not here to try to stop annexation. I'm here to say to Montage Holden and others, please do not run over Mobile, but join Mobile and allow Mobile to join you. We all can realize our dreams and wishes, too. To the city of Goodyear, when you annex Mobile, can or will Mobile still be Mobile? I say with all confidence that two walking together would be stronger for us than one. I will be available to answer all questions if I can. I'll work with you as you work with us in Mobile. P.S. If Mobile loses its identity, I would greatly appreciate having the Welcome to Mobile sign to place at L.A.J.K. Ranch, per my percy saying. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other cards?
No, every card.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay. And, sir, those will try to have answers for you at the next meeting on the 18th. And great points. Thank you. Okay, we'll now move to consent part of our agenda. I'm going to ask the city clerk to read the items by title only, please.
Item 8A, Resolution, Resolution 0611 or 8, to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Flood Control District of Maricopa County for the right-of-way acquisition, utility relocation, construction, construction management, operation, and maintenance of the Bullard-Wash Improvements Project, which is located at I-10 to McDowell Road. 8B, council will consider for possible action approving the final plat for Montecito Village at Estrella Mountain Ranch, parcel 9.5, subdividing 29.2 acres into 92 single-family lots and nine tracts generally located west of Estrella Parkway, approximately three-quarters of a mile south of West Star Drive, and Village 8 of the Estrella -- Village 9 of the Estrella Mountain Ranch, planned area development district, subject to stipulations. Item C, council will consider for possible action approving the final plat of Montecito Village at Estrella Mountain Ranch, parcel 96, subdividing 31.9 acres into 80 single-family lots and 11 tracts generally located west of Estrella Parkway, approximately three-quarters of a mile south of West Star Drive, and Village 9 of the Estrella Mountain Ranch, planned area development district, subject to stipulations. Item D, council will consider approving and accepting the map of dedication for approximately one-half mile of 182nd Drive, and one-quarter of a mile of West Calistoga Drive, generally located three-quarters of a mile south of the existing terminus of Estrella Parkway. Item E, council will consider for possible action approving and accepting the map of dedication for sewer easement measuring approximately 1,500 feet in length, 20 feet in width, in an area west of parcel 9.6 of Montecito Village Phase 2 and Estrella Mountain Ranch, generally located three-quarters of a mile south of the existing terminus of Estrella Parkway. Item F, council will consider approving the map of dedication for West Harrison Street, South Citrus Road, and West Yuma Road within Canyon Trails Unit 4 of West Phase 2. Item G, council will consider approving the final plat for Canyon Trails Unit 4 of West Parcel V3, subdividing 17.6-ish acres into 75 single-family lots, generally located one-quarter mile east of the intersection of Citrus Road and Harrison Street, within the Canyon Trails Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations. H, council will consider approving the final plat for Canyon Trails Unit 4 of West Panel E, subdividing 26.1 acres into 53 single-family lots, generally located one-quarter mile southeast of the intersection of Citrus Road and Harrison Street, within the Canyon Trails Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations. Item I, council will consider approving the final plat for Canyon Trails Unit 4 of West Parcel F, subdividing 31.5 acres into 123 single-family lots, generally located at the southeast corner of Citrus Road and Harrison Street, within the Canyon Trails Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations. Item J, council will consider approving the final plat for Canyon Trails Unit 4 of West Parcel G1, subdividing 28.8 acres into 105 single-family lots, generally located near the northeast corner of Citrus Road and Yuma Road, within the Canyon Trails Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations. Item K, council will consider approving the final plat for Canyon Trails Unit 4 of West Parcel G2, subdividing 18.6 acres into 100 single-family lots, generally located north of the northeast center of Citrus Road and Yuma Road, within the Canyon Trails Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations. Item L, council will consider approving the final plat for Canyon Trails Unit 4 of West Parcel H, subdividing 28.9 acres into 106 single-family lots, generally located one-quarter mile east of the intersection of Citrus Road and Yuma Road, within the Canyon Trails Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations. Item M, council will consider reappointing Ms. Joanne Osborne, Sean Lux, and Ms. Sherry Laura Donnell to the Planning Commission for three-year terms expiring on January 31, 2010, or until his or her successors are appointed and qualified. Item 2 of Item M would be council will consider appointing Robert Williams to the Planning Commission for a year, three-year term expiring on January 31, 2010, or until his successor is appointed and qualified. Item N, council will consider authorizing the city manager or his designee to negotiate with Buckeye Union High School District 201, a dedication agreement for the dedication by Buckeye Union High School District Number 201 of an approximate 90-foot-wide strip of land located at the northern boundary of the Estrella Foothills High School property, and to execute all documents necessary to effectuate the dedication agreement. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Would anyone in the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Would anyone on council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Could I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept the consent agenda, items A through N, as Redwood, the clerk.
Motion from Councilmember Scott, and a second from Councilmember Antoniak. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cavill.
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa.
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lord.
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Pass 7-0.
As we move to the business part of our agenda, anyone wish to -- you're all welcome to say it, if you'd like to leave us an opportune time.
You can leave anytime you want.
You can stay as long as you want.
No, it's a good time right now.
Anytime you want to leave, you can.
We should really do that.
Just make sure you leave a tip.
Thank you for coming.
Bye-bye now. You're welcome.
We'll now consider adoption of the 16 ordinances for the proposed development impact fees. Sean Bradford will present.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We're here tonight to talk about, to discuss the impact fees. Again, I'd like to try to make this a conversation, so feel free to interrupt me at any point. I think this is a very important process. The staff is available. If there are questions you have that I cannot answer, I will look to my peers in the audience to assist me. Trying to keep things consistent, a short agenda on what we're going to be talking about tonight, and then the schedule of events. We are here at December 11th for council to consider proposed fees using a phased adoption. We've come up with some phases that we'd like to discuss with you this evening. The previous, before I get into this evening's information, the previous presentations that I provided staff, excuse me, that I provided mayor and council focused on service demand, looked at the methodologies used, the GROM analysis, talked about cost recovery and the importance that growth pays for growth. And we also tried to answer all of the questions that were raised by the development community. What we're focusing on this evening is adoption of the previously recommended fees using a phased approach. We've come up with four phases that would phase in over a period of time. The proposed phasing would allow us to receive full cost recovery for specific cost categories. We felt it was more prudent to implement full fees for different categories than to try to adopt a 25% or a 30% rate on a new fee. It would make the accounting of that fee difficult. The methodology that we use currently is different from the methodology that we're proposing for adoption, so trying to track that from a logistics standpoint was a little difficult. And we also felt that there's some validity in phasing these over a period of time based off of our recommendations, based off of the service needs that the new development would bring to the city. So as I stated, the proposed phasing would allow for full cost recovery, and we've tried to seek a balance between the need of the city and our infrastructure based off of the cost of service, and then also market competitiveness. We are sensitive to trying to keep Goodyear in a position where the development will come, and the city will continue to grow, and we think that we've found a good balance. Looking at, again, we've kind of --
Item 8A, Resolution 611 or 8, to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the flood control district of Maricopa County for the right-of-way acquisition, utility relocation, construction management, operation, and maintenance of the Bullard Wash Improvements Project, which is located at I-10 to McDowell Road. 8B, council will consider for possible action approving the final plan for Montecito Village at Estrella Mountain Ranch, parcel 9.5, subdividing 29.2 acres into 92 single-family lots and nine tracts generally located west of Estrella Parkway, approximately three-quarters of a mile south of West Star Drive and Village 8 of the Estrella Mountain Ranch, planned area development district, subject to stipulations. Item C, council will consider for possible action approving the final plan of Montecito Village at Estrella Mountain Ranch, parcel 96, subdividing 31.9 acres into 80 single-family lots and 11 tracts generally located west of Estrella Parkway, approximately three-quarters of a mile south of West Star Drive and Village 9 of the Estrella Mountain Ranch, planned area development district, subject to stipulations. Item D, council will consider approving and accepting the map of dedication for approximately one-half mile of 182nd Drive and one-quarter of a mile of West Calistoga Drive, generally located three-quarters of a mile south of the existing terminus of Estrella Parkway. Item E, council will consider for possible action approving and accepting the map of dedication for sewer easement measuring approximately 1,500 feet in length, 20 feet in width, and an area west of parcel 9.6 of Montecito Village Phase 2 and Estrella Mountain Ranch, generally located three-quarters of a mile south of the existing terminus of Estrella Parkway. Item F, council will consider approving the map of dedication for West Harrison Street, South Citrus Road, and West Yuma Road within Canyon Trails Unit 4, West Phase 2. Item G, council will consider approving the final plan for Canyon Trails Unit 4, West Parcel B3, subdividing 17.6-ish acres into 75 single-family lots, generally located one-quarter mile east of the intersection of Citrus Road and Harrison Street within the Canyon Trails Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations. H, council will consider approving the final plan for Canyon Trails Unit 4, West Panel E, subdividing 26.1 acres into 53 single-family lots, generally located one-quarter mile southeast of the intersection of Citrus Road and Harrison Street within the Canyon Trails Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations. Item I, council will consider approving the final plan for Canyon Trails Unit 4, West Parcel F, subdividing 31.5 acres into 123 single-family lots, generally located at the southeast corner of Citrus Road and Harrison Street within the Canyon Trails Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations. Item J, council will consider approving the final plan for Canyon Trails Unit 4, West Parcel G1, subdividing 28.8 acres into 105 single-family lots, generally located near the northeast corner of Citrus Road and Yuma Road within the Canyon Trails Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations. Item K, council will consider approving the final plan for Canyon Trails Unit 4, West Parcel G2, subdividing 18.6 acres into 100 single-family lots, generally located north of the northeast center of Citrus Road and Yuma Road within the Canyon Trails Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations. Item L, council will consider approving the final plan for Canyon Trails Unit 4, West Parcel H, subdividing 28.9 acres into 106 single-family lots, generally located one-quarter mile east of the intersection of Citrus Road and Yuma Road within the Canyon Trails Planned Area Development, subject to stipulations. Item M, council will consider reappointing Ms. Joanne Osborne, Shawn Lux, and Ms. Sherry Laura Donnell to the planning commission for three-year terms expiring on January 31, 2010, or until his or her successors are appointed and qualified. Item 2 of item N would be council will consider appointing Robert Williams to the planning commission for a year, three-year term expiring on January 31, 2010, or until his successor is appointed and qualified. Item N, council will consider authorizing the city manager or his designee to negotiate with Buckeye Union High School District 201, a dedication agreement for the dedication by Buckeye Union High School District Number 201 of an approximate 90-foot-wide strip of land located at the northern boundary of the Estrella Foothills High School property, and to execute all documents necessary to effectuate the dedication agreement. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Would anyone in the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Would anyone on council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Could I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept the consent agenda, items A through N, as read by the clerk.
Motion from Councilmember Scott and a second from Councilmember Antoniak. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Cavallier.
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa.
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lord.
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Pass 701.
As we move to the business part of our agenda, anyone wish to... You're all welcome to say it if you'd like to leave us an opportune time.
You can leave any time you want.
Anytime you want to leave.
Just make sure you leave a tip.
Thank you for coming. Yes. We'll now consider adoption of the 16 ordinances for the proposed development impact fees. Shawn Bradford will present.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We're here tonight to talk about, to discuss the impact fees. Again, I'd like to try to make this a conversation, so feel free to interrupt me at any point. I think this is a very important process, and staff is available. If there are questions you have that I cannot answer, I will look to my peers in the audience to assist me. Trying to keep things consistent, a short agenda on what we're going to be talking about tonight, and then the schedule of events. We are here at December 11th for council to consider proposed fees using a phased adoption. We've come up with some phases that we'd like to discuss with you this evening. The previous, before I get into this evening's information, the previous presentations that I had provided staff, excuse me, that I provided mayor and council focused on service demand, looked at the methodologies used, the GROM analysis, talked about cost recovery and the importance that growth pays for growth, and we also tried to answer all the questions that were raised by the development community. What we're focusing on this evening is adoption of the previously recommended fees using a phased approach. We've come up with four phases that would phase in over a period of time. The proposed phasing would allow us to receive full cost recovery for specific cost categories. We felt it was more prudent to implement full fees for different categories than to try to adopt a 25% or a 30% rate on a new fee. It would make the accounting of that fee difficult. The methodology that we use currently is different from the methodology that we're proposing for adoption, so trying to track that from a logistics standpoint was a little difficult. And we also felt that there's some validity in phasing these over a period of time based off of our recommendations, based off of the service needs that the new development would bring to the city. So as I stated, the proposed phasing would allow for full cost recovery, and we've tried to seek a balance between the need of the city and our infrastructure based off of the cost of service, and then also market competitiveness. We are sensitive to trying to keep Goodyear in a position where the development will come and the city will continue to grow, and we think that we've found a good balance. Looking at, again, we've kind of used the standard single-family three-quarter inch meter as the benchmark, and then we get into, further on in the presentation, a little bit additional data, but we're proposing an impact fee of $12,709 in Phase 1, which would be effective April 1st, 2007. That's what the fee would be for a single-family home, and then that increases over time in nine-month increments to the final phase of July 1st, 2009, which would bring us to the $16,434 north of the river, and then with that regional transportation fee that we've talked about in the past, would bring south of the river to $17,324. Again, that's just a schedule, looking at the different fees and their effective dates. We're going to get into, and I've used the same examples that I've given to council in the last two presentations, similar-sized facilities in comparison how Goodyear proposed rates would stack up against the competition. Before I get into that, I just wanted to back up just one step. When we talk about Phoenix, the three planning areas that we're looking at as a competitor to the city would be Estrella North, Estrella South, and then also Levine West, and we were able to, actually through the help of the development community, we were able to get Surprise's proposed rates, and they have, they have six planning areas in the city currently. They've taken their fee structure and lumped it into three categories. There's Southern Planning Area 1, which is the furthest, most south end of the city. It borders Peoria Avenue, and then the Planning Area 2 is actually 2, 4, and 6. They've lumped those into what they call Planning Area 2, and then Planning Area 3 would be 3 and 5. So the areas that are closest to the city would be SPA 1 and SPA 3. Those are the geographically closest to the city. So when we get into comparisons, that'll provide you a little bit of additional information. Again, we've tried to seek a balance between need, and we need to, with this proposed schedule, we need to monitor our CIP and try to be proactive because we are delaying implementation of full cost recovery for specific categories, so staff will need to work with, with us, you know, with each other and monitor the process, and then if necessary, alternative funding would need to be found for projects that we just couldn't postpone or delay, given the need that the city has. So Phase 1 would be all of the utility. It would be the implemented increased water, water resource, reclaimed water, and wastewater fees. That would be effective April 1st, 2007. Nine months later, we would implement Phase 2. That would be all of your general government, and that would be effective January 1st, 2008. Phase 3 would bring public works and fire and emergency services, the full implementation. That would be November 1st, 2008, and then the final phase would bring in the remaining cost categories of library, police, open space, community parks, community facilities, storm drainage, both local and regional transportation, and arterial streets. That is proposed July 1st, 2009.
It should be, rather than November, October, right?
Excuse me, October 1st, thank you, thank you.
Let me ask you another question while we do that. Has any time period been agreed to, to look at these fees either one year or two years down the line with the development community?
I don't think we've come to a consensus. We met with the development community, I attended a meeting with finance director, city manager, and deputy city manager, and we talked about phasing, we talked about multiple phases over periods of time. We weren't able to come to an agreement. I think the development community, and I won't want to speak for them, but I think the impression that we got from that meeting was they would like to see this stretched out as long as possible. I think, I think they recognize that there is a need, and the city does have capital needs, but they would like to see a phasing at the longest intervals that the city, I guess, could handle through a CIP process. We took that information, I know the city manager has talked to some people, I know the finance director's met with some people, and collectively, we came up with, and we're recommending, a nine-month phasing in between steps. And I'd be happy to, we could talk about that, and if you had other suggestions, we can, you know, as we go on this evening, we can, we would more than willing to discuss that with you.
Well, right now, you know, with this attitude, I'm disappointed of the reaction of the developing community, because it would appear that we're bending over backwards to accommodate them, and frankly, I'm getting a little tough, a little tired of this. And I want to be friends with the development community, but if that's their attitude, they've lost a friend here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor. Shawn, if you may. This, what is it, community park, raising the fees on the community park, how does that affect our timetable for the development of our first and second and third phases of the park to the south, the one next to the high school? Is there an impact there on these, by moving these over to 7109?
We would still be collecting community park fees from the old, the old structure. We have a 10-year CIP is what we've identified and the needs associated with the proposed rates over a 10-year period. What we would need to do is, with this phased implementation, we would need to take that back and scrub those numbers and in some instances, reprioritize needs based off of either the city's contractual obligations, if they've agreed to do things through development agreements, or if there's the wishes of mayor and council where you would like to see an individual piece of infrastructure be constructed within a certain period of time. If the impact fee revenue is insufficient to meet that need, the city would have to identify other funding sources to be able to meet that timeline, or the project would be delayed.
Yeah, well, let me, let me rephrase, rephrase this a different, in a different way. How does that affect all of these areas, all the categories, by setting this up for a two-year period of development, as opposed to one year or even immediately, April or July? Because we had our schedule of CIP projects set up, and we had dates beside those. Now, I understand your water sources, that's fine. I have no problem with the utilities fees, but I'm talking about the other fees for the nonutility. How does this impact that schedule that was put together by the city some months ago and presented to the council? That's my question.
I will defer to the finance director for that answer.
Thank you, Shawn, Mayor, Vice Mayor Cavallier. Did an analysis of the fees and compared to the assumptions that we made in developing the capital improvements plan. We used the same growth assumptions that we used a year ago in developing those revenues so we could have an apples-to-apples comparison. Because of our conservative nature as we built those revenues in the capital improvement plan, I did not see a material impact to our capital improvement plan by adopting the fees in the phases as presented to you. What we do still have to analyze, but I did not analyze before this meeting, and I think it's a, it's a different issue, is that the revenue, or the, the growth assumptions that we made at that time, which was done a year ago, were higher growth assumptions than we would make today because of slowdowns that we've received. But we wanted to have apples-to-apples comparisons, and this would not materially impact that.
Okay, because there has already been money set aside to start that park down south. That money has already been there. I hope it's still there.
We did not, we have not adjusted the capital improvement plan for this, and from the revenues estimated at the rates proposed to you, we would not expect material adjustments of that nature that would cause that concern. I am concerned about the growth estimates, and I want to, I want to make sure you understand that, that there are probably some aggressive growth estimates that we will have to look at, but that would confuse this issue tonight to use different growth estimates than what was previously included.
But I don't want us to approve this and then find that later on, well, because you approved this over a two-year, we have to put off some of these things. Possibly, we might have to dig into some other monies to set up some of the infrastructure for some of that growth we want in industry that we're talking about. Can we do that? I don't see how we can do that if we do this in a two-year plan. I'm not in favor of the two-year plan, and as you...
And I respect that, Vice Mayor. I, I just wanted to do a broad calculation because I have the same question you did as it related to the adopted plan. That is the adopted plan that the council adopted back in June of 2006. Clearly, timing of projects could be affected by this, but they'll also be affected by changes in growth assumptions.
Not, not having that information in front of me tonight, I cannot support this item on there, so I would, I would be voting no on this, on these impact fees tonight. Thank you.
Can we get you the presentation first before we start debating?
Shawn, explain something to me, maybe I'm just having trouble catching on here. We have, down here is a date, 10/10/08, implementation of fire and emergency services. Yet, the way I understand this, we are in less than a year going to be building a new fire station at Pebble Creek, and within less than two years, the next fire station following. Where's, where's the money coming from for that, for those two stations if we're not implementing this until, oh, wait, I'm confused.
We're collecting fire and emergency services fees today under the old rate. The new rate would not go into effect until, so it's not that we're not collecting any fee, we're collecting the old fee that, that we will continue to use and would continue to assess.
Yes, thank you.
And again, Vice Mayor, we've tried to strike a balance between the sensitivity to the marketplace and remaining competitive and the needs of the city. This is, this is our recommendation. If mayor and council chooses to adopt a different rate schedule, we're, you know, we're here to answer any questions that you would have associated with that, but we're recommending nine months in between each phase and using a full-phase approach.
My problem is that I don't see enough information to say that I can go with this, either for the development committed, community, or for the city, or for the citizens, I should say. I want more information because this doesn't give me enough information to make me feel good about this kind of a schedule, and we are going to look at this later when we set up a schedule like this, and now we're going to look at this, depending on the growth issues later. Now, I don't know, it doesn't give me confidence that the two-year plan has any really, I don't see how it can be truly effective or be what we, a true measure of what we really need. It may not be enough, it might be too much. We're talking about something that, there's too many unknowns in here. So based on that, unless you roll the table, I, I just can't support this.
Yeah, we have other, we have other slides that we'd like to talk about and show you some comparisons. Councilmember Holland, do you have a question?
I just wanted to add a comment. This doesn't preclude us from revisiting this at any time in the future. That's part of it, Councilman Cavallier, that I think that maybe we have forgotten through all this, is that we do get an opportunity to revisit, so...
What we've, what we've tried to do is prepare some comparisons, again, using previously looked at facilities, square footages, number of units, and to try to show a cost comparison with our, with our competitors and show you where we would fall in the marketplace using a full-phased approach. The first thing that we're going to look at in one of the areas that was, that there was some concern is multifamily. Again, a 12-unit complex sharing a 2-inch water meter is the comparisons that we've used in the past. Using, using the phased-in approach with utilities going first, April 2007, that would increase our multifamily fee to $7,200, $7,229, which would be slightly less than Glendale and less than Avondale as well. We would be $1,392 less at the, at the, excuse me, pardon, that's Phase 2, my apologies. We would be less than Glendale and Avondale at Phase 1. As we continue to implement, nine months later, January 1st, 2008, our fee would increase to $8,412, which would put us slightly more expensive than Glendale at $542 a unit, but again, still less than Avondale, $1,392. And when we get to Phase 3, we would still be less than Avondale at $95, $9,507. So again, by, by stretching this out, we're allowing the marketplace to catch up to the other communities to implement their fees, and then it also allows us to reprioritize our needs through future studies. We've talked about a rolling 10-year plan where the city's preparing to come back every two to three years to give council an update on where we're at and adjust based off of the development's need. If development picks back up and infrastructure needs are greater, we can make that adjustment. I think by, by setting the table this, this, this time and coming back every two years, I think we would avoid any issues where we'll have large swings to the plus or to the minus. I think we'll be able to stay on top of it. And again, as, as the need arises, we would make recommendations if necessary. The next area that was of concern is industrial fees. Again, using a 2,000, a 200,000-square-foot facility with a 3-inch meter, those are the fees that we've used in the past. In Phase 2 and in Phase 3, we would be less than Avondale and Glendale, and we would also be less than Surprise, Planning Areas 2 and 3 at the end of Phase 3, which would be October 1st, 2008, or roughly two years from today. We believe this approach allows us to remain very competitive in the market. Our impact fees would be, would be less than some of our direct competitors, and we think that that, by removing that, that obstacle, that's one less thing that would, would prevent the city from attracting the development that we want and the types of development that we want. So again, by using a phased-in approach, we're able to stretch out the, the period of time and allow growth to happen at hopefully an accelerated rate. The next area that, that we've talked about in the past is warehouse. Again, that is a 2,000, a 200,000-square-foot facility with a 3-inch meter. The city of Goodyear does not differentiate warehouse to industrial, so our rates stay the same. Other communities have used a different cost model where warehouse fees are less. So by using that at the end of Phase 2, which would be January 1st, 2008, we would be less than Avondale and Glendale, and we would be roughly the same as Planning Area 1 and Surprise, which is one of our direct competitors. Again, as we continue to increase through other phases, our level of competitiveness, competitiveness is maintained. At the end of Phase 3, we'd be $494,000. Again, relative to Avondale, $384, or Glendale, $365, relatively competitive, and again, by, by stretching it out, I think it, it allows us to attract the types of development we want and, and allows us to not become, not, not have impact fees become an obstacle. I think there's other things that the city would have to overcome, infrastructure being one of the big things that we've talked about in the past, but by doing it this way and stretching it out, I think that we're able to mitigate any, any adverse effects impact fees would have. Office, the city would remain very competitive in office, even at full implementation. North of the river, we'd be $337,000, which is very competitive in the marketplace, but through Phases 1 and 2 and 3, we would be less north and south. We start to see a disparity in our rate based off of regional transportation costs in Phase 4. So for the foreseeable future with these fees, we'd be very competitive, we believe, in the office market. And then the last one was retail, 200,000-square-foot facility with a 4-inch meter. Again, we feel that these revised numbers are very, very competitive. Goodyear would come in at $826,000, which is, Avondale's proposed is 1.3 million, Glendale has been adopted at 1.1 million, so again, very, very competitive to their rates, and then as we continue to increase through the multiple phases, at the end of Phase 3, we would be roughly $1 million, which is still less than either the Avondale-proposed or Glendale rate, and then at full implementation, north of the river would remain relatively competitive at 1.2 million, and the south of the river picks up that regional transportation component, which would push us up to approximately $2 million. On an ongoing basis, again, by having a two-year rolling plan, work is, never really stops on this, it's, it's going to be a continual process. The city manager has instructed our staff to start to develop the strategies that we would use for the next rate, the next impact fee study. One of the things that we want to look at is developing our internal cost model. The city of Goodyear, as I've come up before you in the past, have talked about the value-added service that we want to provide to our citizens, and that, that value-added service does come at a cost. We want to make sure that our needs are built into the next model that are, that are accounted for. We, it, all, all studies are not created equal, and each city has a different need, whether it's through services... service level or infrastructure needs. So we're going to really take a proactive approach. And our thing is we want to focus on the ratio between dwelling units, multifamily, office, industrial, retail, and really look at what are our costs and run the study, run the numbers, and compare it to what we're proposing here today. If they look within line and they look to follow market, we wouldn't recommend any adjustments, but if there's an adjustment needed, again, by having a phased-in approach, it allows us to come back to you in time and adjust accordingly. We can monitor the marketplace, we can monitor other communities, and I think it's important that staff can provide you continual updates. These are...some of the other cities have proposed rates, they have not been adopted. Avondale was in the paper last week, they're getting close. So I think it's important that as these rates go into effect, we really run those analyses and show you that here's where we are from a competitiveness standpoint. And if fees become an issue, it would allow us the time to either come up with other recommendations or make adjustments as needed. And I think the big thing that the cities, based off of council advance and discussions that we've had in front of you, the city really wants to take a proactive approach on economic development. I think one of the things in the past, the Vice Mayor brought it up, I think it was the last meeting, that we've had difficulties at times really growing the economic development. I think at times it was a lack of infrastructure, and I think we've taken some steps working with council to prioritize that need, and I think we're going to be bringing you some options shortly to hopefully get that infrastructure in place. Fees are one component. When a developer, a development community comes in and looks at building in Goodyear, fee is one of many things, land cost, cost of construction, is there access, where does it sit from the highway? Those...I mean, there's all sorts of things, I'm sure Holly could speak much more eloquently than I could, but fees are one component, and we think by using this phased-in approach, we take that hurdle away, and it allows us to focus on the needs of the development community. With that, I tried to keep this as short as possible. I am available for any questions, as is staff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Opportunity now for anyone from the public. Ms. Cochran, would you read the name?
So I have a speaker card from Buzz Slaven.
Mr. Slaven?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I'm Buzz Slaven, my address is 2198 East Camelback Road, Phoenix 85016. And is there a three-minute time limit? I need about five minutes if...go ahead with me, thank you. What I want to address is the way that the legislature has mandated how you as a municipality in Arizona are required to go about in adopting and implementing development impact fees on new growth. We've talked about this in the past, I submitted a copy of a memorandum that I had done in 2002, and Mr. Gamwich has addressed it before to you, but I thought tonight maybe it might be important if we lay out to you a little bit more specifically what we believe the legal problems are, and we understand that you're probably just inclined to go ahead and dot what the staff is proposing here this evening, but I think I speak on behalf of most of the developers, and I'm authorized to speak on behalf of most, and by the way, that merely adopting this impact fee and then putting it in in phases rather than sort of putting it in all at one time is sort of like taking the blunt force trauma out of an immediate imposition of the fee and just having it go on in phases. The amount actually is unacceptable, and we think that your accountants, or excuse me, your consultants' report is flawed, and I'd like to address that. And I'm really making a record, if you don't mind, here this evening, and in any event, I'll try to make it as brief as I can make it. Essentially, the state legislature gave you the authority by statute to adopt development impact fees, and that is under ARS 9-46305B4. And I'm going to put a copy of it on the Elmo, and Jeff, wherever you are, fine, okay. And I'm supposed to be able to autofocus this thing, and maybe it's not...we can read it. Can you see it? Yep, okay, you can see it there, okay. Basically, this is the way the statute reads, and I've highlighted the same word in both the sentences. It says, "The amount of any development fees assessed pursuant to this section must bear a usable relationship to the burden imposed upon the municipality to provide additional necessary public services to the development." I focus on burden because I think that's what your responsibility is, is to ascertain what that burden is placed on the city from new growth. The next sentence was on to say, "The municipality, in determining the extent of the burden imposed by the development, shall consider," among other things, "the contribution made or to be made in the future in cash or by taxes, fees, or assessments by the property owner towards the capital costs of the necessary public service covered by the development fee." And what we interpret that to mean is that you must take into account certain of the revenue stream that flows from new growth, and so it's not all just about costs that your consultant has presented to you, but it's also about netting out what would be capital revenues that should be offset against the amount of fee that you're attempting to propose. I don't want to talk in generalities, I'm going to put a formula up on the screen next to tell you what we think of that. The other aspect of this, and B5 says, "If development fees are assessed by a municipality, such fees shall be addressed...shall be assessed in a non-discriminatory manner." And we maintain that that goes both vertically and horizontally, vertically between existing and new growth, and horizontally between the various classes of new growth. So you've got single-family, multifamily, commercial, retail, industrial, et cetera. So we think it has to satisfy sort of a dual test there. And I'm going to give you an example, one example where I think you're really missing the statute and what you're required to do in the statute. Can you all see that? Essentially, this is what we have come up with to illustrate what we're talking about. And we think you start with the gross capital costs of services for new growth. What are those gross costs going to be, okay? Whatever it's going to cost for this service, for the capital cost for the new service, you have to identify that. But then you must net out revenues contributed by new growth, and I'm going to define that for you in a moment. And then you end up with the capital burden that would be placed on the city for providing necessary public services for new growth. Now, we believe that the net revenues contributed by new growth is defined as follows. You take the gross revenues contributed by new growth, and you subtract the revenues required to maintain an equivalent level of service for the new growth. So that the new growth has the same level of service as the existing population, and then you end up with what are called net revenues contributed by new growth. We think that's appropriate, and we think that's what the state legislature is saying under 946305B4. I want to talk about construction sales tax, and we've mentioned it before, but we've mentioned it somewhat in passing. And I'd like to give you a little bit more idea of what we're thinking about on that. And I've used some assumptions here that might be on the low side, but I think they're illustrative of what we think you should take into account, particularly with construction sales tax, which is cash paid at the time that the house is constructed, okay? So that's an immediate cash infusion for the city. Your consultant has projected over 10 years, you're going to have 36,000-plus new households. So we know that's certainly something you're considering. We came up with an average of 5,000 per household, although I've been told by one of my clients that it's more like 7,000 per household for purpose of sales tax construction. I'm using the 5,000, I think, as a conservative number for purpose of illustration. You take 5,000 per household times 36,000 households, and that's approximately $180 million that the city is going to be receiving in new revenues from this growth, and it's going to be coming right at the front end, it's going to be a capital contribution of revenues for the city. So our position is that that needs to be taken into account, that must be a deductor offset when you're designing your fee. Now, Sean, in the past, has stated that you don't use those revenues for capital purposes, you use them for operating purposes, but we submit to you that the state legislature says you must consider this when you are designing the impact fee. So for instance, in this case, there should be an offset per residential impact fee of $5,000. That's a conservative number, but you're going to end up generating 180, and if you go to 7,000, it's more like $250 million of revenues that come directly from new growth. I've been here practicing for 71 years, or excuse me, my God.
I was going to ask you what you drink.
All this as well as you, Mr. Susan. Anyway, since 1971, so I've been here for quite a long period of time. But it's no secret that a lot of the cities grow, and you've grown because of new growth. I mean, you grow and you prosper because new growth comes to your city, right? And that's important, and that's what makes cities work. And all the wonderful facilities and many's we all have, whether you live in the city of Phoenix or Goodyear, wherever you live, live in Mesa, you're going to have new growth is going to be spurring a lot of new services. So it's no stranger to you that new growth produces a lot of revenues that help your city, and they help new residents as well as the existing residents. Oh, and I understand the thing just occurred, so give me two more minutes and I'll sit down.
How about one minute?
Okay, give me one minute.
You're at nine minutes now.
You know, I noticed you were sneaking a cookie when, between periods of time here, so I didn't want to mention that, but now I've got it on the record. Anyway.
That's now you down to 30 seconds, so.
You're developing...
Give me one minute, Buzz.
BBC does not provide for any offsets except for your nonutility development impact fees. They provide a 13% of costs that could be financed using geo-bonds, and they take current unused fee balances, and they'll offset that, but they don't give any other offsets. That's the only ones that are identified in there, and they don't cure it. You can't cure this defect by adopting this in phases. You can't cure the defect by saying, "Well, we'll take these capital revenues, and we'll just use it as operating expenses." It doesn't work that way. Thank you very much for indulging me, and we appreciate your listening. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, very enlightening.
Mr. Mayor, another speaker card from Suzanne Gilstrap.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Suzanne Gilstrap. I represent the Arizona Multi-Housing Association. My office is at 815 North First Avenue in Phoenix. I just have one point of clarification that I would like to ask. I heard in staff's overview tonight, an indication that there would be a study, but then later, I'm looking at the differential, possible differential for multifamily, and then later I heard that it would basically be comparing to other cities. If I could have clarification of exactly what staff intends to do with respect to looking at a possible differential for multifamily, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Do you have anything else, Suzanne Gilstrap?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bradford?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. For clarification, the city will initiate a new study that will look at EBU's and the calculations of need for demand and the demand that that specific development places upon the city. We would look at single-family, multifamily, commercial, industrial. The comparison is, we will provide council an update as proposed impact fees are implemented. We would come back and provide you that data so you can see a hard number, our adopted fee versus Avondale's adopted fee versus Glendale's adopted fee, so that you can have an accurate, this is what it is at the end of the day, because it is a valid point that these are proposed fees. We believe that they'll be enacted at those levels, but again, we're not, you know, we're the city of Goodyear, we're not the city of Avondale. So as those fees are adopted, we will come back and provide that information to Mayor and Council. Would that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further cards?
No.
Any further comments from the public? If seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to read the ordinances, all ordinances, by title only, please.
Item 9A, council will consider adopting ordinance 061037, amending paragraph H of section 9-8-3 of article 9-8 of chapter 9 of the Goodyear City Code to provide for the imposition of a general government development fee on all new residential and non-residential development to serve demand resulting from projected new development for the period 2006 through 2015, providing for an effective date of January 1, 2008, and providing for separability. Item 2, council will consider adopting ordinance 061038, amending paragraph J of section 9-8-3 of article 9-8 of chapter 9 of the Goodyear City Code to provide for imposition of a library development fee on all new residential development to serve demand resulting from projected new development over the period 2006 through 2015, providing for an effective date of July 1, 2009, and providing for separability. Item 3, council will consider adopting ordinance 061039, amending paragraph G of section 9-8-3 of article 9-8 of chapter 9 of the Goodyear City Code to provide for the imposition of a public works development fee on all new residential and non-residential development to serve demand resulting from projected new development over the period 2006 through 2015, providing for an effective date of October 1, 2008, and providing for separability. Item 4, council will consider adopting ordinance 061040, amending paragraph E of section 9-8-3 of article 9-8 of chapter 9 of the Goodyear City Code to provide for imposition of a police development fee on all new residential and non-residential development to serve projected demand resulting from new development over the period 2006 through 2015, providing for an effective date of July 1, 2009, and providing for separability. Item 5, council will consider adopting ordinance 061041, amending paragraph F of section 9-8-3 of article 9-8 of chapter 9 of the Goodyear City Code to provide for the imposition of a fire and emergency services development fee on all new residential and non-residential development to serve demand resulting from projected new development over the period 2006, 2015, providing for an effective date of October 1, 2008, and providing for separability. Item 6, council will consider adopting ordinance 061042, amending paragraph 1 of section 9-8-3 of article 9-8 of chapter 9 of the Goodyear City Code to provide for the imposition of an open space and regional parks, city code to provide for the residential development to serve development resulting from projected new development over the period 2006, 2015, providing for an effective date of July 1, 2009, and providing for separability. And that was amending paragraph I of section 9-8-3 instead of 1. Item 7, council will consider adopting ordinance 061043, adding paragraph N of section 9-8-3 of article 9-8 of chapter 9 of the Goodyear City Code to provide for the imposition of a new community parks development fee for all new residential development to serve demand resulting from projected new development over the period 2006 to 2015, providing for an effective date of July 1, 2009, and providing for separability. 8, council will consider adopting ordinance 061044, adding paragraph O to section 9-8-3 of article 9-8 of chapter 9 of the Goodyear City Code to provide for the imposition of a new community facilities development fee on all new residential development to serve demand resulting from projected new development over the period 2006 to 2015, providing for an effective date of July 1, 2009, and providing for separability. Item 9, council will consider adopting ordinance 061045, adding paragraph P of section 9-8-3 of article 9-8 of chapter 9 of the Goodyear City Code to provide for the imposition of a new storm drainage development fee on all residential and non-residential development to serve demand resulting from projected new development over the period 2006 to 2015, providing for an effective date of July 1, 2009, and providing for separability. Item H, council will consider...item 10, council will consider adopting ordinance 061046, amending paragraph D of section 9-8-3 of article 9-8 of chapter 9 of the Goodyear City Code to provide for the imposition of a transportation development fee on all new residential and non-residential development to serve demand resulting from projected new development over the period 2006 to 2015, providing for an effective date of July 1, 2009, and providing for separability. Item 11, council will consider adopting ordinance 061047, adding paragraph M of section 9-8-3 of article 9-8 of chapter 9 of the Goodyear City Code to provide for the imposition of a new regional transportation development fee on all new residential and non-residential development to serve demand resulting from projected new development over the period 2006 through 2015, providing for an effective date of July 1, 2009, and providing for separability. Item 12, council will consider adopting ordinance 061048, adding paragraph L of section 9-8- paragraph L of section nine dash eight dash three of article nine dash eight of chapter nine of the Goodyear City Code to provide for the imposition of a new arterial streets development fee on all new residential and nonresidential development to serve demand resulting from protected, projected new development over the period two thousand six to two thousand fifteen, providing for an effective date of July one, two thousand nine, and providing for separability. Thirteen, council will consider adopting ordinance oh six one oh four nine, amending paragraph of A of section nine dash eight dash three of article nine dash eight of chapter nine of the Goodyear City Code to provide for the imposition of a water development fee on all new residential and nonresidential development to serve demand resulting from projected new development over the period two thousand six, two thousand fifteen, providing for an effective date of April one, two thousand seven, providing for separability. Item fourteen, council will consider adopting ordinance oh six one oh five oh, amending paragraph C of section nine dash eight dash three of article nine dash eight of chapter nine of the Goodyear City Code to provide for the imposition of a water resources development fee on all new residential and nonresidential development to serve demand resulting from projected new development over the period two thousand six to two thousand fifteen, providing for an effective date of April one, two thousand seven, and providing for separability. Item fifteen, council will adopt ordinance oh six one oh five one, adding paragraph K of section nine dash eight dash three of article nine dash eight of chapter nine of the Goodyear City Code to provide for the imposition of a new reclaimed water development fee on all new residential and nonresidential development to serve demand resulting from projected development over the period two thousand six to two thousand fifteen, providing for an effective date of April one, two thousand seven, and providing for separability. And item sixteen, council will consider adopting ordinance oh six one oh five two, amending paragraph B of section nine dash eight dash three of article nine dash eight of chapter nine of the Goodyear City Code to provide for the imposition of a wastewater development fee on all new residential and nonresidential development to serve demand resulting from projected new development over the period two thousand six to two thousand fifteen, providing for an effective date of April one, two thousand seven, and providing for separability. That's all for now.
Okay, thank you. Councilmen now include all the sixteen ordinances in one motion, or if anyone council member would like to separately discuss or remove one of the sixteen from the list, we'll handle them individually. Any opposition to doing them all in one motion? Opposition? Yes?
Yes. I would like to see all of the utility impact fees separated from the nonutility and build areas, and those are two separate.
Okay. Councilmember Susan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In view of the presentation we have from the safety committee relative to fire and police activities in the coming year, I'd like to have item five, which would be item E identified in the agenda.
Could you spoke that louder, sir? We couldn't hear.
Sorry, number two.
Number five?
Five.
You'd like to handle five separately?
Yeah.
Okay, and Vice Mayor would like to handle the first four separately, is that correct?
I'm trying to.
No, not the first four. It's the last four.
The last four. I believe. Anything?
Thirteen through sixteen, is it?
Thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. Those are the.
Thirteen through sixteen, then?
Thirteen through sixteen are the utility fees, is that right, Sean?
Amen.
I'd like for us to vote on those separately.
Okay, then what we can do, we'll take the last four in one motion, and we'll decide to rule on that one or another. Then we'll do number five separately, and then assuming we're making progress, we'll do the remainder, which should be eleven, the other eleven. However, if one council member veers into territory outside the motion, let's accept that, okay?
I'm sorry?
If one of us starts talking about the motion in a more general fashion than water, for example.
Okay.
Let's let that proceed. I think that'll be helpful in the long run. Okay, Vice Mayor, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I move that we vote on items thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen as written by the, as stated by the city clerk, ordinance oh six dash one zero four nine, ordinance oh six dash zero, oh six dash one zero five zero, and oh six dash one zero five one, and oh six dash one zero five two.
The motion is to approve those.
Approve, yes, to approve those.
The motion to approve thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. We have a second?
Second.
Motion from Vice Mayor Cavalier, and a second from Councilmember Holland. It's open for discussion. Let the Vice Mayor start it off.
I simply will say I support those, and I will be voting in the affirmative.
Any other comments?
Going to ask the rationale, but I think you're following it now.
Okay.
Well, it's probably a little on your head. I deserved that after the last meeting. I was waiting for that to come back to me quick. Thank you. I'll take my punch there.
Okay, real call vote, please.
Councilmember Lord? Aye. Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antonia?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Mayor Cavano?
Aye.
Pass seven zero.
Okay, we'll now move to number five, and I'd ask if Councilmember Sousa would make a motion on number five. That's, okay.
I really had a question on number five.
Okay.
Sean? What type of impact, in view of what the Safety Committee has presented us, and it's going to bring to the council in finalization, the early part of next month, what kind of impact is this going to have on the progress of police and fire protection in the city?
Good question, and I would need to defer to the Finance Director for that answer. Apologize.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilman Sousa. There's really two areas of the fee categories that are impacted by the Public Safety Advisory Committee recommendations. One of those is fire, which you did pull off as separate, and the other is police. As we built the model for the nonutility ones to extend out, I'll have to admit that there was some mathematics involved as opposed to purely a policy decision between them, because we wanted to try to keep the increase approximately the same between categories. We had to balance two different variables. One is the residential cost, and the second is the nonresidential cost. Specifically, on the police category, which was one of the primary concerns, as I understand it, from the Public Safety Advisory Committee, if we would have adopted that sooner because of the change in methodology on the way nonresidential is calculated for the police fee, the total nonresidential fee for the retail category would have actually dropped, and the total revenues to the city for that fee category would have dropped earlier by implementing sooner. And so intentionally, we included the police fees in phase four to facilitate that, at the same time that other retail categories were increasing specifically related to transportation. That kept the retail rates from having a drop and then a later spike back upwards. And that was the largest thought process that went into this development. The fire fees were put in a phase three as part of a mathematical calculation.
So really, we really don't know when the Safety Committee is going to want us to implement their recommendations at present time until we get the finalization of their presentation.
And what they presented to you last week was they were concerned about the police fee specifically mentioned, that that increase seemed to them very nominal in light of the needs in public safety. A lot of the impacts that you receive in the police department, growth-related impacts, are non-capital intensive impacts. They are impacts that are more related to number of officers on the street, and how those are covered in the short term and the long term as growth comes up.
So moving this to oh eight, as phase four, it will give us more money to play with at that time, to bring on more police, is that what you're saying to me, or not?
Up until that time in the police, which actually is in the implementation phase of July first of two thousand and nine, it will actually generate more revenue for that category alone than if we implemented it sooner.
Okay, thanks.
Capital-related as opposed to.
Capital-related.
Face of the least carbon, not the officer.
Not the officers. It will have no impact on the other direct costs.
Okay, then, Mr. Mayor, then I would move that.
Do you want to do four and five, or just, one is fire and one is police?
Yeah, let's take, let's take four and five then, collectively. Mr. Mayor, I would move that council adopt ordinance number two thousand and six dash ten forty, amending the police development fee with effective date of July first, two thousand and nine, and subsequently adopt ordinance number two thousand and six, ten forty one, amending the fire and emergency services development fee with an effective date of October first, two thousand and eight. I would so move.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Sousa, and a second from Councilmember Lord. It's open for discussion. Let you start it, Councilmember Sousa. You have any further comments?
None at all, sir. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, you?
I'll just be voting against it.
Seeing no further discussion, I ask for roll call vote.
Councilmember Lord? Aye. Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Nay.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Antonia?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Mayor Cavano?
Aye.
Pass six one.
Mr. Mayor? Last of five motions.
I move we adopt, and I'll just read off the ordinance this year, but it's, for the record, it's items A, B, and C, as depicted in our COAC, and F through L. I move that we adopt ordinance numbers oh six dash one zero three seven, dash one zero three eight, dash one zero three nine, dash one zero four two, dash one zero four three, dash one zero four four, dash one zero four five, dash one zero four six, dash one zero four seven, and finally, dash one zero four eight, as read by the clerk.
Second motion from Councilmember Antonia, and a second from Councilmember Scott. Open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Real quick, just like to thank the staff for their approach and their diligence in sticking with this. I do appreciate as well the development communities' patience, albeit it sounds like the discussion may or may not be over at this point in juncture. And I do believe that this is a prudent move. We're challenged with balancing the needs of what's to come over the next several months and years, as well as balance the marketplace. And I think that the nine months in between phases, everything I've been hearing from your very same community that you all work in, is we're going to see an eighteen-month flip here on the screen, if you will, in terms of growth and some other things. And so I think this gives us the opportunity to watch that occur and adjust to that midstream, if need be. So, anyway, just my comments for the record.
Thank you. Councilmember Lord?
Well, nobody has a crystal ball, although some of our speakers think they have one. We don't have one either. We really don't know from year to year. Who would have thought that a house could go at the price it's going in Goodyear at this date? It's unbelievable. I have a question for, Buzz? I have a question for you. I look at the fees, you know, and as council people, we have to depend on the information we get from the staff, and I trust the staff, and so we see the figures of the other cities. My question to you is, have you gone to the other cities and made the protests that you've made to Goodyear? You know, before you, we had Mr. Gammy who sort of threatened with a lawsuit indirectly. And so I just wondered, are the other communities getting the same kind of approach to them? Because I look on some of these fees, and we're really coming under some of them, and we're also, part of the reasons that we like the phasing, because the last time I spoke before this group, I was very disturbed at what we were doing. But this allows time for us as a council and staff. It allows us time to look at the marketplace and to be able to see if this is good or not good. It can come back before us, we can make changes. So I throw that out to you.
Mayor, and Councilmember Lord, I personally have not made presentations like this to other cities, but I might respond to your question this way. I think the fees have gotten to a certain level where perhaps the development community in the past has, has sort of made compromises and been living with the lower fees. And now that they've gotten to this range, I think there's just general distrust of the system and how it has been working in the past, and so regrettably, this might be the time when the community finally stands up. They didn't have to pick Goodyear necessarily, they could have picked Avondale or Queen Creek or someplace. But I think that simply this was a time where they decided that maybe it was appropriate to make this type of, say, a more aggressive challenge. So I can't, I can't explain other than that. And I guess the other thing that's particularly uncomfortable for me, and I'm not suggesting anything by this that you're not doing this in the best of faith, and you certainly hire staff, and they work very hard to try to bring you good information upon which to make decisions. But my sense of it is, at least at the last meeting I attended, there seemed to be an awful lot of perhaps leaning back and forth on the question of being out of competition with the other cities. And I think you do have to take a look at that, because economic development is extremely important in any city. But my sense is, is that they tend to blur and perhaps not focus on what we think are the real issues, and that is simply the need to do what I've suggested that we do here tonight. So we will probably be presenting to you something more formalistic as far as, you know, what our consultants will say, and we'll probably provide you with a report and ask you to reconsider what you've done here this evening, and then see where it goes from there. But, and I know I'm giving you a long answer to a very short question, appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, you know, this one thing that does do for the community, and I hope you realize this, it buys you time. It buys you time to talk to the city. It buys us time to see what the market's going to do. And believe me, and I repeated this before, prices have gone up so quickly in the community in the last four years. The development community, everybody has made a great deal of profit. So sometimes I look at this, that it was such a candy store for the last four years that everybody wants this candy store to stay. They want it to actually grow it. And you know, that's not the way it works. The market goes up and down, but it still costs the city. So, and we're trying to look at this in a very fair manner. So I'm thinking this is a step for us, giving time for both sides to take a look at this and see what it looks like next year.
And perhaps we can find an antidote or something. Is that what? Yes.
Councilmember Sousa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's what you said. I'm getting the implication here that you, you as a group are cherry-picking the city of Goodyear as being the scapegoat of this issue. And frankly, you know, here again, I'm taking exception, if this is your attitude, I'm taking a serious exception to this procedure, because if you look down the road, since the time that I've been on this council, this council has played fair with the development community. And in many instances, the development community has not played fair with us. You know, and you've gone out on the limb to defeat us in very, very important items that have come before, before us here. And you've gone out and went on to defeat us on many issues. Now, you raise the question perhaps of legal interpretation here, and I have to raise the question at this particular time with legal staff, as to whether or not you feel what Mr., what Buzz has said puts us in a legal situation here. And we listened to you in the past and had your assurances that we are legally able to do.
to do what we're proposing here this evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we've worked with the consultant, we've worked with staff all along the process. I think as Mr. Slavin stated earlier, with his formula, it's his interpretation of the statute. And certainly, there can be two sides to that interpretation. It's really an academic argument, I think, is what he's trying to make to you. He's attacking the methodology, whether or not it has any validity. We've given you the opinion that we think that fee as adopted, making the findings that you have made as a council, would be defensible in a court of law, and we stand behind that. Mr. Slavin may challenge the case. I don't know. We'll just have to see what happens. But in good faith, you have made a decision on a number of fees this evening. There is a methodology. We feel that satisfies the statute as it currently stands in the state of Arizona.
And I rely on what you've told us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yes, I'm kind of worried because, one, residential. First place residential, it doesn't pay for itself, never has paid for itself. And without the commercial and industrial, it would be very difficult for the city to continue to ongoingly keep up with the residential after it's built even. Then, the other thing is, on the industrial and commercial, after you build this, you want us to give you breaks on this and that? Get the—how many times I've heard developers, builders coming to us, people who own this property, give us a break on this, put our infrastructure in force, do this for us, do that for us. Then, when that's done, the clients that you either lease or sell to come to us and say, oh, chief, city, we want you to give us incentives so that we can come to your city. By the time we do all of this, then it doesn't look nearly as rosy as it was. And some of our neighboring cities have done this, and they're not gaining from it what you might think they are, just because there's a lot of pretty lights down there and there's a lot of commercial going on. They're not making as much money as you think they would be because of these kinds of things. So I think that staff is right on target in saying, we need this now. And I can go along with a one-year phasing, phasing end situation, but I can't buy going into a two-year, and that's why I'm against this. And then thirdly, the fact that the—I'm not worried about you taking this to court because if you take this to court, then the impact fees are tied up in court, you're not going to develop either. And I think you want to develop more than we want you to develop. So there's two sides of that coin. And possibly, yeah, we haven't developed as fast as the other cities, but there's a reason for that, and I think it's a good reason. And I think our residents and our citizens will stand behind it. So therefore, that's my stand, and that's why I'm voting the way I am on this. Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Cavalier, I appreciate what you stated. A couple of things I'd like to point out, and I'm going to sit down, and I realize that this is after the fact, and I've done these types of agreements before, but there are extraordinary projects such as regional malls and large regional employment centers that actually do produce more than what they're provided. And in fact, BBC recognizes this in its report, that essentially, and if that were to occur, you are allowed to provide credits back to them. I mean, I'm not talking about development impact fee credits necessarily, but there's such an extraordinary generation of income that that's recognized. And so cities are allowed to incent that type of development by providing for sales tax abatement and so on and so forth. So that—and the other aspect of it, and again, I'm not here waving a red flag as far as litigation goes, but my sense of it is, and this isn't the first time we've been involved in this, but my sense of it is if a builder comes in and pays the fees and puts under protest on the check, that you will accept the check and you will issue a building permit, and that construction will go on. And that allows the builder the opportunity to then go challenge if necessary, and allows business to go on as necessary. But I don't think it's going to result in any type of a necessary blockage for development to occur in the community, but it just gives the builders due process opportunity to, if—if—if they decide that they would like to challenge us, that they have the opportunity to do that. I don't think it'll—I don't think it'll slow down your growth.
Councilmember Scott?
Just a quick comment. I'd like to thank our staff for all the work they put into this. The process that they finally used to come up with the figures that we've just voted on has been a very reasonable process. There's been a tremendous amount of criticism from this council, and certainly at least as much criticism from the developers as we went through this. And now we've arrived at numbers that we've all agreed on, at least the councils agreed on, and we'll just see what happens from here. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Holland?
I too want to say thank you to the staff, and also thank you for keeping the communication lines open between the staff and the developers. I think that's been very important. The second thing is about the phasing. I think this is the right approach for us. We're kind of going into this unknown territory, and this appears like it's the right thing for us to do, and it does buy us some time. I believe the first time that I heard the word "phasing" mentioned, it came from a developer group that I sat in. So I know it's not a new approach. Other cities have used it, other experienced developers that brought this term forward. And I think it will work, and again, appreciation to you all.
Further comments, discussion? Councilmember Antoniak?
I just have a simple yes/no question for Mr. Slavin, and that's what I prefer it limited to. Were you representing Valley Partnership this evening?
Yes. Okay. Okay, so no further discussion, ask for roll call vote on these ten remaining ordinance.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier?
Aye. Nay, sorry.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Pass 6-1.
Can we take a five-minute break? How about 7:45, and we'll get back on this agenda? We should be able to get to this quick points.
We'll pick it up in thirty seconds, thirty seconds. Be on our agenda, consideration of annexing 2,052 acres. Open the public hearing. Steve Kretschia will do the staff presentation. Steve here? Steve Kretschia?
Mayor, Steve is ill today and I'm substituting for him.
It's people who get ill.
The mayor indicated this is a public hearing to consider a request from Ariad Inc., represented by Snell &amp; Wilmer for annexation of approximately 2,053 acres, generally located in the southern planning area of Goodyear. The boundaries, the north boundary of this property is Chandler Heights Road. The southern boundary is Patterson Road. The east boundary of this property is essentially the Waterman Wash. And the west boundary is 175th Avenue Alignment, which is approximately a half a mile east of Rainbow Valley Road, which is here. The area in red represents the, Madera is the name of the project that the developer or the owners have indicated, represented to us. They have submitted a general plan amendment. The property is currently designated in as rural residential. They have provided us a general plan amendment to increase the density, as well as provide community commercial and master plan environment of 2,300 acres. The property meets the statutory requirements for annexation. The red line indicates the current boundaries of the city. The crosshatched or very light beige or, this area is the Madera project that's proposed for annexation. So there's 2,300 acres within the project, 2,000 of which are not in the city and are proposed for annexation. Another map, a little bit better. The property in question has sixteen residents. They're located in this area. The remainder of the project is the development of Madera. There is an operating dairy farm on the north end, which the developer, Ariad, has purchased, and that will be obviously taken out with the development. There is, it would create an island, these sixteen property owners, and there's some vacant land. So to tie the dairy farm area to the remainder of the property, we can't just leave the area remaining. That would have created a county island. So the sixteen property owners are being included with the annexation. It's my understanding, well, it's not my understanding. We did provide a Q and A, a question and answer on the annexation now to the property owners. There are a couple of property owners here this evening that have questions about their specific impact that they would have if they were annexed eventually in terms of taxes, police, fire, utilities. And I'd be happy to give them my name and address, and they can contact me, and I can specifically go over their individual situation. This is a public hearing. For the annexation petition, the blank petition was filed by the clerk's office on November thirteenth. We have, within the thirty day period, waiting period, we have to have the public hearing per state law, so this is the required public hearing. So at this time, mayor, that concludes my comments. And there are people that may wish to address the mayor and council on this particular annexation.
Thank you. Any comments from the applicant? Do we have any cards from the public, Ms. Cocker?
No.
Opportunity now for any comments from the public. Any comments from the public? Public hearing?
Last item must have driven him off, I guess. They were here, I spoke to them in the hallway.
They aren't out there, are they?
I don't believe so.
Do we have any cards? Okay, close the public hearing. We'll move to
Just real quick on that last one. I think the two gentlemen actually left at the beginning of the meeting. I believe they were sitting right here in the second row. So Harvey, would you reach out to them and make sure that they get contacted?
There were two gentlemen that popped up. I think they got confused with the comments at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay.
Just to make sure that they got their due process and questions answered. I have no idea, but Harvey obviously interacted with them at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, we'll now have a public hearing. To consider changing the city sales tax code, I'll open the public hearing. Marvin Carter.
Mayor, city council. I'm here to recommend changes to the city code to go along with what was changed by state legislature that preempted cities and towns for taxing certain items. We also are adopting a matrix for the motel, hotel motel, to make it easier for them to report tax. And we're doing some slight clarifying of references that no longer exist in state code. So that's what we're doing. No rate changes or anything like that.
Could you just advise quickly why the average new home sale would result in a $200 decrease in construction sales tax?
That's a rough, that's a rough estimate right now. It depends on the cost of the impact fees. All the cities are studying exactly that deduction that the home builders will be allowed to deduct from calculating their sales tax. So we're not really sure exactly how much it's going to affect each house. Not only will it affect us, but it also affects the state. And we're still working on those numbers.
Thank you. Comments from the public, public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only, please.
Resolution 06-1109, declaring as public record that certain document filed with the city clerk entitled the 2007 amendments to the tax code of the city of Goodyear.
Could I have a motion, please? Move the adoption of the resolution, number 06-1109. Motion from Councilmember Susan, a second from Councilmember Lord. It's open for discussion. Are we changing the, you know, right now that the builders deduct 35% off the construction sales tax?
That's correct.
Is that what we're changing, 35 maybe?
No, we're adding a deduction. In effect, we're going to add a deduction. So what happens now will be you deduct the impact fees first, then you would deduct the 35%. So in the past, that deduction did not exist. The legislature feel that that was a double taxation, so they took it out.
Interesting. Should have had you here earlier. I'm sorry, any other questions? Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa.
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott. Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lord.
Aye.
Mayor Cavill.
Aye.
Thank you. Now I have a public hearing. You consider adopting resolution ordering work to be done on McDowell Road corridor. Open the public hearing, Kim Bendon.
Do we have a point of order?
Yeah.
What about the ordinance?
Ordinance number 06-1055.
Amendment to the city's market tax code. Can we go back?
06-1055.
We had two actions there.
Now I got this instruction. Okay, I was reading another instruction this year, I apologize. So we've got the roll call vote on the resolution 1109, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, now with ordinance, could I ask the city clerk to read that by title only?
Ordinance 06-1055, relating to the privileged license tax, adopting the 2007 amendments to the tax code of the city of Goodyear, by reference, establishing an effective date, providing perceivability, and providing penalties and violations.
Okay, could I have a motion, please?
Motion to accept, ordinance 06-1055.
Motion from Councilmember Scott, and a second from Councilmember Holland. Now it's open on the ordinance discussion. Seeing none, could I have a roll call vote, please, on the ordinance?
Councilmember Sousa.
Aye.
Councilmember Antoniak.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lord.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavill.
Aye.
Mayor Cavill.
Aye.
Pass 7-0.
Okay, now we'll move to McDowell Road Commercial Corridor Improvement District. Open a public hearing. Public hearing is open. Kim Bendon will do the staff presentation.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you this evening. I'll be providing you with a brief presentation regarding key points on the McDowell Road Commercial Corridor Improvement District as part of tonight's public hearing, and also recommend that council adopt the resolution ordering work. Forgive me if I don't look the remote correctly, there we go. The improvement district is generally bounded by Interstate 10 to Virginia Avenue and Pebble Creek Parkway to Bullard Avenue, as shown by the dark outline on the map that you see on your screen. It includes the properties of West Core, Globe, Evergreen Development Company, and Tang Realty. In addition, the improvement district will purchase infrastructure constructed by SunCore that has been prefunded by WM Grace, March Development, Wells Fargo, Great American Capital, and Steve Johnson Development. The purpose of the improvement district is to fund the construction of infrastructure needed to bring area development projects to fruition. And this includes the regional mall and the power center, as well as adjacent retail projects. Over the past year, councils approved several actions preparing for the anticipated improvement district formation, including selection of our engineering firm, Wood Patel, and also pre-funding them to have them design the district. Also, as I mentioned, we've had a few pre-funding agreements that have been created with the developers within the district to allow work to commence prior to the availability of bonds. And most recently, on November thirteenth, council approved the resolution of intention to form the improvement district. As discussed during the resolution of intention presentation, there's many steps that are involved in the formation of a district. As you can see by your list, the resolution ordering work is the second bullet to the last, so we're really close to the finish line as far as formation of the district and its process. If the resolution ordering work is approved this evening, the remaining council action would be the approving of the bond sale, which is anticipated to occur in approximately April of 2007. As mentioned, tonight's action is to provide a public hearing, as required, related to the resolution of intention that has previously been approved, and also advising the developers, landowners, and public of the intent to form the district. It's important to note that no protests to the formation of this district have been filed. We request that council approve the resolution ordering work related to the improvement district, and this approval will allow staff to proceed with facilitating the final design, construction bidding, and bond purchase, related according to the intended construction schedule. This map is the project phasing schedule, which has come before you a couple different times throughout this process, provides an overview of the various construction within the improvement district. And to let you know, we do currently have some construction underway as related to those pre-funding agreements, specifically on Pebble Creek Parkway from Montavista to Virginia, and also on, or excuse me, from I-10 over to McDowell Road. And on McDowell, the portion between Pebble Creek Parkway and the anticipated Bullard Wash Channel is also currently in process. Between June 2007 and October 2008, the remaining road area within that project phasing map, including the Bullard Wash Channel, will be constructed. And all of these improvements comprise the work that was outlined in the resolution of intention. As a reminder, the total for the improvement district is just over $78 million, and the district improvement costs cannot exceed this number, as this is the engineer's estimate that's been prepared and was provided for in the resolution of intention. This cost includes construction, right-of-way acquisition, purchased improvements, capitalized interest, and incidentals. There'll be a 25-year bonding period, and the city will not be assessed by the improvement district, as assessments for bond payments will be paid for by the developers. It is a contingent liability to the city, which means that the city would be responsible if any of the assessed property owners do not make their assessment payments. However, the city would be made whole by either selling the assessments or acquiring the rights to the property. Finally, there are many benefits to the community as a result of the district formation. It expedites all the construction that you saw on the project phasing map, in addition to coordinating with area improvements, specifically those that are being done by SunCore currently. It generates, excuse me, coordinates all the road improvements, and this reduces the impact on our motoring public. It generates substantial sales tax receipts as a result of the retail development that will occur in this area. Our citizens will not be taxed to fund this project. There will be significant further employment potential, as well as additional opportunities for our residents to obtain goods and services locally. And finally, the improvements to the Bullard Wash Park between Virginia and McDowell Road will be completed as a result of this project. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We also have representatives from our engineering firm, as well as bond council, available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Opportunity now for public comment. Public hearing, public comment. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only, please.
Resolution 06-1110, to ordering the improvement done as described in resolution of intention number 06-1098.
Could I have a motion to approve?
Motion to accept, resolution 06-1110.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Scott, and a second from Councilmember Holland. It's open for discussion. Vice Mayor?
This development has a right to do this, don't they? It's not something, if the council voted this down, by state law, doesn't this development have the right to set up this kind of an improvement district? My question, I guess, is why are we voting on this? And I just like to know.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Cavill, my name is Keith Hoskins. I'm an attorney at Gus Rosenfeld. We're representing the city as bond council with respect to this district. The district is a creature created by the city in order to fund this improvement. The developer couldn't do this on their own. They come to you and ask you if you will do this. They could build the roads on their own with their own money if they wanted to. But if they want to get the benefit of being able to extend the payments over the 25 years and do it on tax-exempt financing, instead of on their own financing, which would be taxable rates, so you have a better interest rate, and it is the purpose of the improvement district statutes to allow cities to finance improvements and to coordinate them through, you know, a larger area than just one piece of property or another. In this case, we only have a few owners. Improvement districts also work if you have hundreds of owners. It allows you to get the work done, something the city wants done, and enough of the property owners want done. And what tonight was, was the resolution ordering work, or still is the resolution ordering work. You adopted the resolution of intention about a month ago. We let out, all the owners knew that that was happening, and they have an opportunity to protest if they don't like the idea. If the majority protests, you're done, you've stopped the project. Or one of them who didn't like the boundaries on that little map you saw could object and say the boundaries should have left me out, or should have taken the guy across the street in. Well, there were no protests filed, and there were no objections filed. So we held the public hearing as a matter of statutory steps, and you would normally rule on, and I think the resolution declares that there were no protests and no objections. So it is a city-created and a city-driven thing to assist development. And in this case, a handful of property owners, instead of, you know, hundreds of property owners. But it is still up to you.
I've never seen a time when the city council turned anything like this down. I mean, it's always been, we naturally believe, before. And so I guess my question is, why does this have to come before city council when we know that it's a go?
Well, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
I know, I know that you're
That the city, if you decide to go forward with this, is issuing improvement district bonds of $78 million. And although the property owners will be assessed for that, it still ultimately is something of concern to the city to make sure. So cities have turned down doing improvement districts often. If they don't like the project, they don't feel comfortable with the credit, or they don't feel comfortable with their own financial situation. But I think this one has, you know, many, many cities have done many improvement districts. What you're really voting on tonight is proceeding with this project in order to sell bonds to fund it. You're not just saying, yeah, we like the idea of a mall, or we like the idea of these streets. You're voting on whether or not to proceed to assess the property owners and issue bonds. So that's why we're here with you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Antoniak? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Scott?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavill?
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Mayor Cavill?
Aye.
Pass 7-0.
We'll now move to consider an ordinance to rezone 134 acres. Farhan?
Thank you, Mayor Cavill, and then to the council. I'll begin by providing you with some background information regarding the subject property and the properties that surround it. And so in context, what we're looking at, in this case, is 134 acre area, bound to the north by Camelback Road, to the east by Cotton Lane. And directly to the west is the Talaverdi Estates' proposed single-family residential development, which is about 293 acres and just under 400 lots. And directly to the south is largely vacant and currently being utilized as agriculture. Directly across the street, again to the east, I should mention, is the proposed perimeter West One development, which is similar to what's being proposed here via West. I'll begin to show you the proposed land use map that's included within the PAD document that I provided for you. Pardon the glare. Again, we're looking at about 134 acres. And of these 134 acres, what the applicant is proposing is about 16 acres of community commercial to the north. That would be the requested zoning district for that area. And directly to the south, we're looking at about 110 acres of light industrial. And incidentally, the two collector roads bifurcate the property, both at the east, west, and northerly, southerly directions. To the southeast is the APS Eastman, it's about 100 feet in width. And incidentally, there's about a 10-acre area here within the industrial portion of southeast that is within the accident potential zone of Luke Air Force Base. And the 15 acres here to the northeast is actually not a part of this proposal. In reviewing the rezoning document before you, staff noted that, again, as I mentioned, we have Talaverdi Estates here located directly to the west, the single-family development that I spoke about. And so we pay particular attention to the western boundary, which incidentally coincides with the 65 decibel noise level surrounding Luke Air Force Base. And as you can see here, the property is predominantly designated for industrial uses. And so we want to pay particular attention to that western boundary in creating an adequate buffer between the two uses so that they conflict minimally as possible. And so what the applicant has proposed, and this is, Paula doesn't know which exhibit in the packet, but I think so, it's Exhibit 16. Rather than explaining in detail, I will just generally mention that the PAD proposes a 30-foot setback, at the very least, on the industrial side of the property, or I should say, the property which the applicant owns. Plus, you have a green belt on the Talaverdi side, which may vary anywhere between 60 and 90 feet. And so in addition to that green belt that you have on Talaverdi, and incidentally, I have a map of Talaverdi Estates as well, if you'd like to take a look at that as well. In addition to that, the applicant is providing a number of buffer buffering methods to separate the two uses. And it really depends on whether or not there will be an aisle drive, as in this case, or a bay door on the portion of the building that will be adjacent to the residential development. So the buffer lengths may vary, really anywhere between, as you see here, about 140 feet to about well over 200 feet. So in addition to those buffering mechanisms, those methods that the applicant is proposing, staff is also recommending a stipulation. And that would be stipulation number 20, stipulation that's unique to this project, is that for any building that proposes, if the applicant were to propose a building where a bay door where a bay door would be adjacent, would be facing the western property boundary, in those cases, the applicant would need to come in to obtain a use permit for any building having a bay door on that side. In addition, any building that would be over two hundred and fifty thousand square feet would also require a use permit as well, so we can review any possible concerns that they might present. So that's just stipulation number twenty of the twenty-one stipulations before you. With that, I will conclude my comments and answer any questions you might have before I end up the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Opportunity for the applicant.
Here, Council, EPO, seven oh two East Osburn. We appreciate the staff's recommendation for approval, along with the planning commission's unanimous recommendation for approval. We accept all twenty-one stipulations. As you know, we're in performance with the general plan. We're compatible with Luke Air Force Base and the corresponding noise contours. I expect that if I ask, "Do you want to hear any more from me?", the answer would probably be no. I will ask, "Do I need to say anything more in order to obtain your approval?" Otherwise, if you're happy, I will be happy to sit down. And I leave that to you.
Further comments from the public? Comments from the public? Could I have a motion, please? No, I know. Ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only.
Ordinance oh six one oh five six, providing for conditional rezoning of one hundred and thirty-four acres of property from the agricultural urban zoning district to the light industrial and general commercial zoning districts, with a final planned area development overlay to allow for development known as Camelback three oh three Commerce Park, generally located at the southwest corner of Camelback Road and Cotton Lane, admitting supplementary zoning map number oh six oh one one, to provide for the change in zoning, providing separability, and providing for an effective date.
Could I have a motion, please?
I rule we adopt ordinance zero six one zero five six, as read by the City Court.
Second. Motion from Councilmember Lord and the second from Councilmember Antoniak. It's open for discussion.
I have a question.
Councilmember Scott?
I just have a question. Response fire from Thomas and Richfield Road, it says, let's see, approximately, which is approximately five miles from the site, property is currently located above, what is the response time for that, for five miles? Is that like eight minutes, or why the concern?
Here, Councilmember Scott, and I think by the time we see, it would be our hope by the time that we see any development on this proposed zoning action, that the new station closest to this facility would be located at Pebble Creek Parkway and McDowell, or excuse me, Pebble Creek Parkway and Clubhouse Drive. We haven't done any modeling of that area, but it suffice to say that it's somewhere in excess of six minutes or so from the area, from the new fire station proposed by Pebble Creek.
So even when we get the Clubhouse Fire Station up, we're still not going to meet our four-minute response time?
That's correct. There's anticipated a facility base close to this project that would be within the four-minute response, but it's in the out years of our capital planning. It's often referred to as a Sadea location to the west of this development. You may be familiar with it, approximately citrus and just north of McDowell.
Do we have a recommendation or plan for notifying, was ever going to do any construction in that area that's outside our usual response time?
In the form of a disclosure?
Yes.
I'm not certain.
Thank you, pardon. Did you repeat the question, please, as I was concentrating on the verbiage here that I?
We toot our horn as having a four-minute response time. This, by our own admission, even with Clubhouse Station, is outside our four-minute response time. Is this going to be in the form of a disclosure to, was ever going to be building out there?
Mayor Cavalier, Councilmember Scott, quite frankly, we haven't discussed that, but certainly it's something we could develop.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect to my fellow Councilmember Scott, haven't we debated this time and time again? And while you might toot our horn that we have a four-minute response time, I articulate it differently in the sense that we strive to achieve a four-minute response time, not that we will achieve a four-minute response time.
I think that's the general way it's presented. We strive for a four-minute response time, but when we start building it outside, way outside of that, no matter how we strive, we're not going to make it, are we?
Agreed, but we've been doing it for years, and six minutes isn't completely unacceptable or out of line from what exists today, and quite frankly, what is approved.
If no one else feels uncomfortable with it, so be it.
Okay, further discussions by council?
The area that's facing the residential areas is the C-two, is that correct?
Councilmember Sousa, this area here, about a hundred and ten acres of the side, I'm not sure how long this boundary is, but that's light industrial.
Can't see.
All right, thank you, pardon. I could have Elmo, please?
It's on.
There you go, okay. This portion here is light industrial, is what's being proposed. Commercial is directed to the north, just south of Camelback.
So the light industrial then could pose a problem for residential, would it? Not because, I'm looking specifically at what we're allowing in there, it would be trucking firm, and that would be detrimental to the residential area, I believe.
Hence, we discussed the buffering mechanisms and the unique use permit requirements in this case with regard to the bay doors and the, some of the larger buildings. And as site plans come in, should there be a trucking lane, we can certainly discuss what types of buffering mechanisms trees, what caliper, how off.
If it does occur, then we can discuss the next time, right?
Well, certainly in cases where there would be a bay door, which would obviously mean that there would be some kind of trucking traffic in between the two uses.
All right, thank you.
But we're really protected by that use permit, so I mean, the idea that you're going to be looking at this at all times, whatever business comes in there, satisfies
All those in favor of the, no, roll call vote?
Councilmember Antoniak.
Aye.
Councilmember Scott.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lord.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cavalier.
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa.
Aye.
Mayor Cavalier.
Aye.
Pass seven zero.
Okay, our last item on our agenda is the appropriation of funds for personnel and infrastructure in the area. Call them on it.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Purpose of the item tonight, staff is seeking council authorization for the appropriation of four point two million dollars in state shared revenues for oh six oh seven. This item is follow-up from the June twelfth city council meeting. That night, staff presented the fiscal year oh six oh seven tentative budget. State shared revenue that was budgeted was based on estimates, because the city had not yet received the actuals to date from the Department of Revenue. Delay was due to the mid-decade census update, which was in progress, and since the adoption of the budget, the state has verified that the amount of the state shared revenues for the city of good years, approximately four point two million dollars over what was budgeted. This amount of revenue is ongoing and will potentially increase after the 2010 census supports additional growth. Staff is recommending the additional funds be appropriated for personnel to support the city's capital improvement program and to support the key recommendations from the management assessment. Table one in the COAC identifies the ten positions that are being recommended for hire during this fiscal year. Four of the positions provide additional support to expedite permit times for key economic development projects. The positions are technical in nature and they will assist in the review process. There's a staff report attached to the COAC that explains how those positions will support existing staff and facilitate the technical review of the projects to achieve a thirty-day turnaround. Other positions being recommended at this time support code enforcement, intergovernmental relations, and the office of the mayor and council. Staff is recommending that other operational needs be addressed next calendar year as part of the management assessment. There are funds as a part of this recommendation that are being recommended to support those key recommendations and for the benefit of the public. The city commissioned a comprehensive staffing organizational management study that will review service levels, operations, and staffing levels, and recommend how the city can improve services. A draft report is due out in January, and a final is due in February. So this recommendation sets aside funding this year so the city can respond to key findings prior to the next budget cycle. The remaining balance of funds is recommended for the debt service to support the city's capital projects. Funds can support debt service for infrastructure within the key economic development corridors that were presented to you last month during the council advance. Could also be used for debt service on Cotton Lane Bridge, Spring Training Stadium. Just to give you an idea, approximately one point five million dollars in annual debt service can fund fifteen million dollars worth of infrastructure over a period of fifteen years. So that concludes my presentation, and be more than happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the public? Could I have a motion, please, to approve the appropriation, authorizing the appropriation of four point two million in state shared revenues for fiscal year oh six oh seven for new personnel and infrastructure in accordance with COAC number zero six three zero seven nine? So what? Second. Motion from Vice Mayor Cavalier and the second from Councilmember Antoniak. It's open for discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, say goodnight, stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed, nice hat, seven zero. Thank you. Opportunity now for the staff to discuss the follow-up action.
The staff will follow up with the citizens and the Madera case so that some of their questions will be addressed, such as impact of annexation on their property. That's the only item that I'm aware of. Is that correct, staff?
Okay, thank you. Opportunity for council that have inquiry to staff. Inquiries to staff. Seeing none, we'll have our last meeting of this calendar year next week, an executive session followed by a special meeting, and it's possible that added to the agenda, you may have seen the draft agenda, will be subject related to the agreeing with the SDA on the provision of funding for us. So hopefully we'll have more on that by next week. Pardon me?
It's a holiday party.
Oh, yeah, and Friday is the holiday, is that what you're referring to?
That's it.
You want to state that, Mr. Cleveland?
I believe it starts about eleven o'clock, eleven fifteen, according to the sponsor, and we invite all of you to attend. We'd love to have you there, and as happily well.
Okay, thank you.